This conference will now be recorded.
Oh.
That was, what was that?
That was the recording in Japanese.
Japanese, okay.
I don't know why it did that. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Sherwood.
Present.
Commissioner Coibula.
Here.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Vos.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, oh, I got Gill. Commissioner McGinley, absent. And Commissioner Andy.
Here.
Oh, he's here, thank you. Okay, ready.
Okay, so we have at least one adjustment to the agenda in that item three examples of outreach in Eugene during COVID won't be happening tonight. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Um, I'd like to add a brief discussion of the minutes to the city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we can add that on the backend if that works.
Back end's great.
Uh, if I missed that, will you remind me, Brenda, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we'll have business from the audience. So as we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until your call to provide public testimony. We'll have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the planning commission acting as the committee for citizen involvement on any subject. If you're joining us online and wish to speak, please use the chat window. It looks like a speech balloon in the upper right corner. Please send a comment to the organizer with your name, mailing address, and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select organizer at the bottom of the chat window. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone, we will announce a time for those on the phone to speak. If you do not wish to speak, just state that you do not want to speak. When you speak, please state your name and mailing address on top of having already said that in the chat bubble. So is there anyone in person in the planning commissioner room?
Greg James would like to comment, and that was it.
Okay, and there's no one in person?
There's one other person. But, uh, Joey said hasn't sent a message.
Okay, well, then we'll have testimony from Greg James.
Hello, um, planning commission. Um, I just quickly wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, um, congratulations, Commissioner Sherwood, uh, as, as the chair, serving as the chair. This is your fourth year on the commission, and I knew you early on, and, and I knew you would be an incredible planning commissioner. Uh, I would also like to say, um, to, to Tim Vos, Commissioner Vos, um, publicly, I'd just like to state, uh, I appreciate his eight years of service on the planning commission and his commitment to the planning commission. He's been engaged at, at various levels during his, his time of service, and I just wanted to thank him for his service to the planning commission of Springfield.
Thank you, Greg. I really appreciate you saying that. Uh, I'm sure Tim would like to, to probably respond as well.
Well, I, I told Brenda a little earlier that I wanted to be as quietly in my departure as possible, so I didn't want any fanfare of any kind. So I was actually on the fences to whether to even attend tonight. So, uh, I don't really have anything prepared, any prepared statements or anything. So, uh, uh, it's been a very interesting experience, and we'll see what next year brings, and hopefully we'll have a healthier society next year.
Great. So once again, thanks so much for saying that, Greg. It means a lot coming from you. I know you spent a lot of time on the planning commission, and, uh, I believe you're looking to, again. So really appreciate that. So do we have any other potential business from the audience, Brenda?
No other business from the audience.
Okay, well, in that case, then I believe we have Using Springfield Oregon Speaks from Sandy Belson.
Good evening, planning commissioners. It's good to, um, see all of you here in some form. So this is not your first time to actually be exposed to Springfield Oregon Speaks, but it's the first time that we're really focused on it. And, uh, so the meeting tonight is your chance to ask questions. We can look around at it together and start to get familiar with how to use this new platform. Our hope is that, especially with the pandemic and people not being able to come into city hall as easily to speak, but even after the pandemic, that this platform will expand our opportunity for people to participate in the planning commission's meetings, the land use process, and potentially expand to other committees or commissions and such within the city. So I am actually sharing my screen with you, which is in the Springfield Oregon speaks. And so I've got the agenda up, but I'm going to, this is gonna be tricky with my one screen and my go-to meeting at the same time. So let's see. Uh, how am I gonna navigate around here? So I, this is gonna be with my cursor because I can't use the sidebar with the go-to meeting showing. Um, I can move that around. Okay, got it. So anyway, if I am going to open up Springfield Oregon Speaks, I'm looking at it now as a member of the public, which is how all of you would normally be doing it unless you actually go to log in. Now you can see I'm logged in as Sandy Belson up here at the top. But I'm looking at it as I would from the public because that's the view I've chosen. So as commissioners, um, if you come to this site down here at the bottom, um, if I wasn't logged in, it would say login, and then I would click on there. I would type in my email address, which is, so you would use your city email address. And then if you've set up a password already from having registered, you would type in your password, and then you would come in as a decision maker. But you can also just look at all of the content as a public, um, person, member of the public, and this is how it would appear. So, um, we're just gonna kind of look at it from that public perspective, and then I'll switch back over to the, what makes it different for you as a planning commissioner? So here, um, it's showing that this meeting is in process, or in progress, rather. We can also see that there are no upcoming meetings put into the platform yet. And then here's the, our recent meeting, and that's all we have so far. Over here, there's view archives, but we don't really have any archives yet. We haven't had it long enough. Um, and so then you can click on the meeting to see the content of that meeting. Um, and you can always get the items here in the list on the left. Um, and then this comes up to the agenda page, which is what I'd had open earlier. And then you can click on each of these to see these issues. And furthermore, if you want your regular PDF version that Brenda would normally send out, um, you can just click here, and that will download all of the files that are part of this. Now, this download will not include any of the videos. So like, well, let me go to this one. Here, under this agenda item, Using Springfield Oregon Speaks, we had included a video to help you understand how you as a decision maker can use this, uh, platform. So if you went to the download all meeting files, it would not include the video, nor would it include any of the comments, had we gotten any. Now, we did not get any public comments on this particular issue or agenda item. But if we had, those would not be included with the meeting files. But in, like, the AIS would be here, the agenda, all of the documents that are listed here are going to be available in this one download as a PDF if you prefer to look at the meeting information that way. So I'm gonna go to this item. It's going to be on your agenda a little bit later, but just to show you the comment piece. So as we saw here, there were a couple comments that came in. Now, we have this set so that the comments close at 5:00 PM. The idea being that, just like under normal circumstances, staff would be working until 5:00 PM. And so if we had a public hearing, we would take comments up until 5:00 PM. And so then between 5:00 PM and either 6:00 or 7:00, depending on when the meeting starts, people will no longer be able to submit comments through this platform. So if they did want to comment, they would have to comment during the meeting itself through verbal testimony. Uh, so here, we can see a couple of our staff have helped us test this out, and they've provided these comments. And I'm sorry, I said I was looking at it from public viewpoint, but I'm actually not. Here, you can see that as a staff person, I can either approve or unapprove these comments. So these are curated comments, in a sense. People that provide the comment, if it gets obscene or something like that, then staff does not have to share that out to the public. And as you can see here, it's showing, and this is off, this is visible to the public, that three out of the seven planning commissioners have actually viewed this comment. And we'll get back to that in a little bit. Um, let's see, anything else that I wanna show you? I think that's pretty much it for, um, the overview in terms of the public. Now, as a decision maker, um, I'll just go back to those comments again. You will, I'm not a decision maker, so I don't see it as the same way you do. But there will be a button for you to indicate that, yes, you've read it. And then that will show up to the public that, okay, three out of the seven, so three commissioners have actually clicked that button, saying that they've read the comments. Now, if you had come on just as general public and read it, that doesn't mean you, you know, it just means that you weren't looking at it as a decision maker logged in to be able to click that button. Um, the address information, we have, do you require a mailing address to be provided? And that is because when people provide their comments, we need to be able to send them a notice of decision. And currently, per our code, that needs to be a mailed notice, like US Postal Service, not an email. So that's why we require the mailing address. And, but this is not visible to the general public. It is a matter of public records. So somebody could request, um, the information through a public records request, but it's just not visible through the Springfield Oregon Speaks platform. But you, as a decision maker, would be able to see the address. And there will be, um, we don't have any action items as Commissioner Sherwood was saying today. There is no action items. But if there is vote, a vote involved, then there will be that option, um, within the platform. And then there will be a way for people to monitor the progress so they can see, was the application approved? Or was it carried over, continued? Was the hearing continued and such? So they'll be able to track and get notices as the agenda items, um, action is taken or they're carried forward. So I think I'll stop at this point and see if there's any questions or comments from commissioners as you started exploring this new platform.
Sandy, I could start with a question.
Sure.
So I see that we have this item and the last item, which I believe was the first item that you posted to Springfield Oregon Speaks at the front page. How long do these stay? And, and at what point might they be archived and no longer available to click into?
That's a good question. As far as I know, they stay. Um, like, if I went back up to, uh, the original page, the homepage, so to speak, if I go to view archives, they would be there. And so you could look at past meetings, as long as they're in the archives. And I have not heard of any time limit on how long they would stay in the archives.
That's nice.
We could look into.
So then my follow-up question to that is when you have a meeting that we finish, the meeting, but the item itself is going to continue on to be something else, like another meeting, will there be a link there that will say, here's the link to take you to the meeting that this went to's page? So you could sort of progress through it if you were trying to backtrack, for instance. Do you want to see for a specific action item or, or project that we were looking at? The history of that project, could you quickly navigate from meeting to meeting? Because that can sometimes be difficult, uh, to track.
So good question. I am, I'm not sure if there would be an easy way to look into the history or know the history of that item. I do know that it's easy to carry forward items so that if you have a staff report and all the attachments that were prepared for one, um, meeting, and then that meeting item was continued, that as a staff, we can just easily move it from the one meeting to the next meeting as a, well, not move it, but copy it. So it will still be at the original meeting, but then there'll be a copy at the following meeting. But whether that second meeting would have a direct reference back to that first one, like, if you wanted, what we, we haven't put the videos up, and we don't have minutes up yet of these meetings. But the idea is that these recorded go-to meetings, the recordings of those could be posted. And so if somebody wanted to go back and listen to that meeting and the, um, testimony or what was discussed, then you could go to that previous meeting, listen to the video, or look at the minutes. And I don't know, that's something we'll figure out, and, um, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it would just be a nice functionality to be able to click into a meeting, and somebody's hearing something for the first time, and they figure, you know, where has this occurred before?
Right.
And see that with a quick link, just a link to the old, the old meetings page, since we have pages for each meeting now. So that's something that would be interesting to see. But that's, that's all I have for now. Do other commissioners have questions?
I don't have any other questions in the chat either.
Um, yeah, I had a couple of questions. So when voting on an issue is a thing, will be, will we vote in this? Or will it just be documented in this?
You can actually vote with People Speak, which is the...
And so is that the process you, you will want us to follow?
I don't know. I mean, I think we'll have to, when we actually get to a place where we have a vote, we'll have to see if we want to do it that way or continue with the voice vote kind of thing, um, with emotion and such. So it's a good question. Um, and if you have thoughts about that, you know, I'd be open to, you know, your thoughts. And maybe when we do have that item, we can talk about how we'll do the vote before we actually get to it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm open to voting in it. I just would want to make sure that our instructions are super clear so we are not accidentally pre-voting or something, which could cause a lot of issues. So, like, I don't know if it can be opened, the voting part can be opened, like, during the meeting and not added beforehand or something, just to make sure that it's abundantly clear we're not making decisions before hearings and stuff like that. That's my only concern with it.
Sure, that's a valid concern, and we can look into that.
Yeah, Grace.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. Um, I, I really, um, the little bit that I've messed around with this platform in advance, I think this is gonna be really great. Allow for the information that we're looking at in advance, and then for us to see the, the comments. I really like the opportu, the option for us as planning commissioners to go in and, um, check that we've reviewed a specific comment. That was really wonderful. A couple of questions. Is this purely web-based? Or is it going, is it also an app-based program to where we can put the app on our, um, iPads? Or do we need to go to the website every time? This is my first question.
My understanding is that you would have to go to the website every time, but it is mobile-friendly. So that if you were looking at it from a smartphone, it would, it should be able to function fairly well. Commissioner Sherwood was saying there were some issues with the iPad and navigating around. But in theory, it's mobile-friendly, but it is not an app.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, the reason I ask that question is somehow my, my email is now web-based as well, not an app on the iPad. So now then I'd have to swap between the two web-based programs, which isn't the end of the world. I just wanted to make sure. Um, and then the items, when they're up, when they're loaded into the meeting, like, we have the one for later this, this evening, are we expected to review those, all of the presentations prior to? Or is that, that material will still be reviewed at the meeting? Is my last question.
So in this case, um, we were thinking you would view it ahead of time. But for actual land use decisions, our current code requires that the staff report be provided during the public hearing. So even if there is, um, an applicant presentation uploaded ahead of time or a staff presentation uploaded ahead of time, there will still need to be some sort of staff report and applicant presentation during the public hearing. And that's per our code. But for non-public hearing items, such as work sessions, I mean, I think that's something that commission or the committee can talk about. But the idea is that you would look at it ahead of time, and then that would shorten the meeting time. But if you feel as a group that you would rather all watch it together, we can, you know, this, we're here for you to help you make your decisions and, and such.
Okay, um, thank you. So I guess after, I don't know when we would have that discussion, but we would just then at that point decide whether it was a practice of reviewing it prior or continuing the way we've been doing and reviewing it together. Is that what I'm hearing?
For the non-public hearing items, and even, yes, I would say that, it's true.
Thank you.
So building on Grace's point, that brings up a thought for me as far as the record goes. When we're talking about videos that are on the platform, uh, and then going into the meeting, if certain commissioners don't watch the video before, and others do watch before, and not everything in the presentation is said that was in the video, can that create an issue? And I'm, I'm talking about even in land use decisions, if we did have the video posted up before, and then there was even afterward, would we have to ensure that everything in the testimony, everything that was in that video was then again in the testimony?
So I think the answer would be the same is for documents that you receive in your packet. You know, what's to say that every planning commissioner has for sure read everything in the packet?
Okay.
You know, it's your responsibility to be familiar with the information, um, and it is part of the record. But that could be something that, if it seems like a particularly relevant piece of information and it is not shared, um, during the hearing itself, that maybe that we, as commissioners, you decide, do you want to make sure that that is viewed by all the commissioners during the meeting? Just like, you know, we get public testimony sometimes. We'll read it during the meeting itself. If you haven't had a chance or to read it ahead of time, we'll read it during the meeting and enter it into the record. That way, even those, just handing it in is officially part of the record and providing it to you.
Understood. Thank you, Sandy. Other commissioners have thoughts?
So I've got a question. Did you all get an email to be able to log in? Or has, has anybody not gotten an email to be able to log in as a decision maker into this platform?
As you already know, Sandy, because I emailed you about this and you helped me out with it, there's a problem that McAfee is blocking the email in quarantine. So other people might be seeing, if you see the email from the, um, email filter, that's putting it in quarantine, you might have to bring that up to staff. That was the issue I had. So...
If there are any commissioners who have not been able to sign in to Springfield Oregon Speaks, follow up with me, um, tomorrow so that we can make sure that you can get in.
Thank you, Sandy. Well, I guess I'll ask one last question, Sandy. Is, is this something, something like this Springfield Oregon Speaks? I, is this only being used by the planning commission now? And are we the guinea pig? Is it possible the planning, uh, the city council and maybe other boards and commissions might use this in the future, if it works well?
So we have, uh, subscribed at one level, which would provide access to all of the committees that are staffed by the department, Development and Public Works. If the city council wanted to also use this, then we would need to up our subscription level to be able to be used citywide. So there is potential for the city council to use it as well if the city council chooses to. But I do think that, over time, other committees within the department, staffed by the department, such as the Historic Commission or Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or even some project committees, could, uh, use this if they wanted. But so far, it's just the planning commission. You are our inaugural group.
Gotcha. Thank you, Sandy. Does anybody else have any questions about Springfield Oregon Speaks? Hearing none, I guess that ends that agenda item. Thanks again, Sandy. And we will now have Wetland Riparian Functions and Favorites from Monica Sather. Sorry, Monica, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. While we have this item or issue in using the Springfield Oregon Speaks term, I'm using item, um, before you this evening just to gain more experience using this technology. I also thought it would be a really good opportunity to tie this into an existing project that planning staff is working on. So as the planning commission moves on to more of a policy-focused discussion next year for the Wetland and Riparian Inventory Project for our UGB expansion areas, we won't get as much of a chance to talk about why the wetlands and riparian corridors featured in that inventory merit such attention to become a comprehensive planning project and a potentially multi-year project. So before I get into the content of those materials and share my screen... So before I get into the content of those materials and share my screen, I wanted to check with the commissioners on how easy it was to get to the materials on Springfield Oregon Speaks. I'm curious to know if anybody had trouble accessing those documents or the video. And it sounds like maybe some haven't had a chance to look at the video yet. So I'd like to hear a little bit about that ease of access first before getting into the content.
Curry?
I, I found it easy. Yeah, it was easy to maneuver and great video. By the way, I have other comments about that, but yeah, I found it accessible.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Grace.
I also found it pretty accessible and I loved how on the issue specifically for the wetlands and repairing corridors, it showed, indicated that there were two comments on there for the responses, which made it easy to go and look at. I wasn't sure if we were supposed to look ahead on the videos or the files, so I did not, but that doesn't mean it wasn't easy. I just clicked on it just as you were asking and it loaded really well. So I appreciated that. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. So this helps me with just what to jump into or move to. Any others?
Yeah, Monica, I found it really easy to get into and the video was great, opened right up in the platform as would be expected. So thanks for, thanks for working on putting that together. It was a good test of it.
Yeah, it was fun to do. Thank you.
I didn't actually access the material through the Springfield Oregon Speaks, but intend to do so. I did however, review the items in the package, so.
Okay.
I didn't actually understand that we were intended to review through Springfield Oregon Speaks.
Okay, that's all helpful to hear, just given that we're still experimenting and orienting to this. That helps clarify. I haven't heard from Commissioner Vose quite yet. Was there anything else to add before I jump into the actual questions?
My response is that I don't know if you're aware or not, but this is the last meeting of the year and it's my last meeting as a commissioner, so I'm not immersing myself in this new situation at all because of the fact that I won't be using it.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. So I'm gonna go to what would be that last slide or picture on the video and just summarize what we had in the packet. So momentarily need to go over there. And it's encouraging and nice to hear that I have a little bit more time to talk about this and also that the packet materials attachment one was just a summary fact sheet of this 14, 15 minute video that I did have. So I think if you had seen the packet attachment one, that's going to capture everything pretty well and lead us into the discussion. So tonight I'm looking for the committee's insights as to which wetland and riparian functions described in that fact sheet. And in the video, if you had a chance to see it, are likely to be present or exist in our UGB expansion areas. And those are the North Gateway area, the Mill Race area along the south side, and then some of the Willamette Lane Park properties, Lively Park, Rough Park, and then the Oxbow site along the north edge of Springfield. These functions, if you can see me hover with my mouse, are just visually represented as circles across the top of the screen. And I'll just recap what they are, and I think that might help refocus. And I'm happy to elaborate more about them and what they do. But just to summarize, they boost aesthetic and property values. Some of the findings show another is going to wetlands or riparian areas provides opportunities and offer opportunities for recreation or even educational tours. Another one is these sites can enhance water quality or improve it. The fourth one, actually, they're able to really help control floodwaters in a storm event. And that was something I wasn't aware of and learned about just in working on this project. They have a couple of highlights and facts on that one I found to be interesting. And then the last one is that they provide habitat sites for wildlife and other species. So just hope that recap helps. And then that captures the first question. I'm also interested to learn about your favorite wetlands or riparian areas, which are waterways. And for this last question, if you aren't sure if a particular place is technically classified as a wetland or a riparian corridor, it can be a waterway and that's okay. And they also do not have to be located in Springfield. It'd be neat to hear just about other places or since we're working on a Springfield project featuring and highlighting some of them in our community. So I'm happy to begin that specific discussion focused on these two questions. I can elaborate a little bit more on those five functions I described, like flood control or water quality or just address any questions or comments the commission has based on the packet materials. So opening it up to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And this is just, you know, open discussion. So anybody that wants to add commissioners?
Start off. First of all, I really enjoyed the packet and I think it's really nice that we're beginning to we're more recognizing the value of wetlands. As a surveyor, I saw an awful lot of old maps that showed what the river corridor, both for the McKenzie and the Willamette, used to look like around here before they did the flood control dams. And there's oxbows and the river changed courses multiple times and created different wetlands. I think an awful lot of those have been lost and it's really nice to see that we aren't going to lose, probably not going to lose any more of them. Favorite wetlands. Sure, I looked away in on that. The, my favorite one in the world is the Ho Rainforest up in the Olympic Peninsula. And my second, my favorite local wetland is down in, on the West D, just off the West D Bike Way that floods every year during high water and the water stays in a kind of a sheltered area with ash trees, et cetera, for like two or three months during the winter and then it dries out in the summer. So thanks.
Thank you. For the park in the area in the Olympic Peninsula, could you spell that? If it's, if it's easily remembered?
H-O-H. It's a, it's an Indian word.
Thank you. And just curious if you have like a reason for why, why those are your favorites? And, and curious also about that West D spot on the, on the path. I run on there quite a bit. And so there's that curved area that is kind of between the sidewalk and not quite toward the river. So I was wondering if it was that corner spot. There's kind of a bench near it.
I, I think that's, I think that's the spot we're both talking about, the path. It's the riverside path that doesn't allow the bikes. And it's, it drops and dips real seriously and that'll flood just about every winter in high, well, high water. And the water's trapped back there for a while. There's a lot of the green tree frogs that reproduce in that during the winter. Really nice to come through in the morning and hear them singing their little, their little songs. And that's, that's the one there. The reason I like the Ho so much is it's it gets hundreds of inches of rain a year. So it's just about everything's wetland up there. It's really, really one of my favorite places in the world.
Thank you very much. That was nice to hear about.
I have a question too. Regarding the Mill Race, is there, are there plans? Do we know if there's plans to do anything from the mill in the Mill Race from 28th Street through those areas that are the old auto wrecking yards? I can remember that area was in really bad shape in the past.
I'm not sure about the auto wrecking yard location. So a little clarification there for me, like across street. Or would that mean along 28th, like north toward Main Street?
It'd be, it'd be along the Mill Race from 28th Street to the west.
West. I'm not sure about that and would like to get back to you on that. I know some of that property is privately owned toward the north. So closer to Main Street, but then there are a lot of sub-problems, Willamette Lane and co-owned properties that have potential to be looked at in the future. And I'm not exactly sure for what in terms of property. Were you curious about transportation projects as well?
It'd, it'd be mostly to see if, if there's been any discussion of cleanup of the because the Mill Race in that area was heavily oil polluted through past practices. I'm just wondering if anything, if there were any plans on trying to clean that up eventually.
I can look into that. I do know the stormwater management projects that our environmental services division and other engineering staff have worked on, addressed kind of an early phase of cleanup and where we're at now, I'd like to check in with them on that part. And now that Willamette Lane and suburb are co-owners of some of that, see what they're looking at there.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Curry?
I'll jump in. So I agree. I think it's really cool to look at the, the value of these resources. And I like the way you put it together with the icons. Of course, I think all five of these are important. What I think is going to be cool to use these for is accessing or engaging different audiences throughout the community because of these values. So you know, I, I see the connection with all of the park situations and parks certainly has their own audience. And so maybe that's a way to get them to be interested in engaging with us. Tourism and business people around the livability and people wanting to move here. So businesses want to move here because they have employees have a nice place to live. I think even that part and the recreation part and the clean water parts could be engaging with organizations that care about equity issues. So I see some real opportunity here to use these to engage different audiences. So that was exciting to me. I also really appreciate. So this is government. We have to be formal and we have to follow, you know, processes and everything and all of that is really good, but I think your personal learning and exploration of this has come through and I feel like that makes it more accessible as well. So I appreciated when you discovered something new and noted that you did. And I think it makes it kind of more exciting actually to explore when I hear the people working on it, be excited about it. So so I appreciated that about both, all the content. I'm super interested right now in disaster preparedness work. So I think the flood stuff is really interesting and also critical. And again, another body of people to connect with through on this project. I didn't think about places outside of Springfield. I'm a, I'm a Mill Race area fan partly because it's the intersection of history and nature and I, that's kind of my world. But I'm also a river girl. So give me a river and I'll be pretty happy, kind of any river. So I think they're important and of course they're part of what Springfield is. So I think historically speaking, it's a it's a part of this community's character. It's part of who we are and what this community is about to have the rivers be so significant. So I think that there's some conversation that could happen there also around just the character of our community and livability and tourism and all of those things. And, and I will also reiterate, all of these five things will be important to the tribe. So when you do reach out to them in this process, they might have additional information that's a little bit different than what you've found. So I encourage you to still keep that connection going. Thanks. Thanks for your work on this too.
Thank you. I have a couple of thoughts related to that, but also want to be mindful of time. So briefly, I will mention that the North Gateway area in particular, looking at our first question and what Commissioner Gilli just brought up about floods and the importance of helping prepare us for emergencies. That North Gateway area is a spot that floodway, floodplain are both present. The north side by Cedar Creek in that Willamette Lane study area, a little less so. And then the Mill Race wetlands and riparian areas will have some instances of floodplain. So that was interesting to learn. And just your comment about keeping connections with their stakeholders. And in particular, our tribal members, we have reached out and haven't heard back yet. This year has just been a lot of an ask on a lot of our attentions just on, on many things and so I'll, I'll see what I can do to keep, keep that going. But we did reach out and I wanted to let you know that.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, echoing that there isn't too much time, but also wanting to chime in on my favorite wetland areas around here, I will say that I adore the Mill Race that I used to live over in that area in Springfield and go see it all, all the time, almost daily. But I also very much enjoy Delta Ponds over in, I would say, middle of Eugene. And I also like Fern Ridge Reservoir over near Veneta, I would say. Fern Ridge, one really nice thing about that is the aquatic vegetation. I think, you know, when the water level changes, you can really see a lot of it come through and I think that's pretty cool. Delta Ponds, I always love lily pads. So that's a fun one. And then the Mill Race, it's a lot about the, I guess, the canopy, just having, having all the trees around you, but still being able to have such a beautiful view of the waterways. So those are, those are some of my favorite local ones.
Thank you. I have a similar interest in all of those as well. It was interesting to learn Delta Ponds as a stormwater management project the city of Eugene put on, and I don't remember who their partners were, if there were any. And I don't remember who their partners were, if there were any. And when the fires were going on, I just remember Fern Ridge ended up being a really good escape. Uh, one of the first areas that got to be a clearer air and cleaner air. So thank you for sharing.
Absolutely. Are there any other commissioners that would like to chime in?
Um, I'd add some input into favorite places. Um, it's been said a lot, the Mill Race. I, I love that area in town. Um, out of town, it's not really riparian, but I love what Bend has done with their waterway to make it accessible to, when you go the, I'm totally spacing on what, what they call that. The downtown bend, when you're going down and there's that, the river runs right through it to where people are able to enjoy with a beautiful view and/or on the stand-up paddleboard and go through and really take in and be one, be closer with nature. Um, I think that's really amazing. I like what we're doing here. Um, I like the awareness. Oftentimes when you see people or excuse me, when you see development happening and there's areas that is not being developed. Being in the real estate side of things, um, a lot of people are not, a little more unclear on why we're not developing in these riparian or wetland areas. So I think the community awareness is helpful. And I know there's a lot of people that love those areas and understand why they're important. But there's just as many that don't understand the importance of that. So I think this is really valuable to share with people that this is really important and it's helps add to our quality of life. So I applaud you on that. And I think the more community awareness we have on why the wetlands and riparian corridors are very crucial, not only to our environment, but to our community, our mental health and our way of life. I think that's really, really good, too.
Thank you. A couple of things there. So I wanted to highlight when you said the Mill Race area in Springfield was a special place. Since the video, not everybody had a chance to look at, uh, in there, I just remember feeling really excited to hear that a coworker specifically bought her house, um, thinking about the future Willamalane plans coming in. And those were the Mill Race path and Middle Fork path at the time. So they hadn't been built yet. And I'm just hearing the Mill Race is such a special area for so many. Um, so it's good to hear that tonight. And then bringing up the real estate perspective, eventually next year, when we do weigh policy options for how much or whether to protect certain water resources, once the inventory is complete, we'll be able to look at those trade-offs more. So that is coming. And I think, um, a good way to frame that, how you said that. And then I did want to highlight, um, coming in December, actually, um, for part of the project for this inventory, coming before you again, um, looking at our community engagement plan, um, December 15th at that meeting. Revisiting where we're at, just given the virtual environment for engaging the community and then also looking at just some timeline amendments to that as well. So we'll be able to talk about this again in December.
Thank you again, Monica. Uh, just want to check one last time if any commissioners want to add anything before moving to next item. Hearing none. Once again, thanks, Monica. This was a great presentation and I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes.
Thank you.
So now I believe we have discussion of city council minutes.
Do you want to start that one off, Mike?
Ah, yes. Um, very briefly, uh, just wanted to say that, um, the minutes went to the city council recently regarding Marco La Meadows were just absolutely excellent. Uh, really good work on that. Um, really captured the discussion in all its, all its detail. And, um, also wanted to say that, uh, in cases where the planning commission is not unanimous and it's in our recommendation to council or in cases that you might say had either a lot of input from the public or maybe a lot of, um, uh, community interest, like say, uh, something about a park expansion or something like that. These detailed notes are really, really good and it's, it's nice to have, have them like that. I think that the generic notes for a lot of times that were really unanimous and everything like that. Or something is a, you know, relatively small, uh, issue or is just fine, too. But again, just a really good job on those detailed, uh, minutes about Marco La Meadows. Thanks.
Okay. Since we add it as an item, I just want to give everybody else an opportunity to chime in, but I'm not necessarily expecting anybody will. But kudos, kudos to you, Brenda, and potentially Shannon.
You're welcome.
Do we have reports of city council meetings?
Roy?
Yeah, Tim.
I wasn't planning on, uh, I wasn't sure what to expect when I, uh, joined into this meeting. So I did have a, uh, report from, and I don't, I didn't bring my notes because I wasn't expecting this to be part of the agenda. But, uh, I can, I can wing a report from, I believe it was October the 12th. It's rather dated material at this point, but if you want to, I can go ahead and, and fly through it.
Tim, I'll let you decide whether you think it's useful, but, um, you know, it's,
I'll go ahead and do it and then let you guys decide whether it has any merit.
All right.
Okay, October the 12th, and it was a work session only. Uh, there was also a executive session that was tagged on at the tail end, which was a employee legal claim, which of course that's off limits to the public. But there was two items on the work session agenda. And number one is the state of Oregon is looking at transportation policies, particularly geared to greenhouse gas emissions. And so they are asking various jurisdictions around the state to, uh, weigh in on things that they want to consider in evaluating these new policies. And so Springfield was asked as well. So in turn, staff was, uh, turning to the city council to determine whether they had any particular issues that they wanted to present during this process. And so it's more of a question, an answer session. But the one question that I do remember is asking whether Springfield is planning on, uh, adopting a bike share program similar to what Eugene has. And so staff's response was that not in the immediate future. And I think that there's, uh, from what seems to be the case, there's some issues with the program that Eugene has. Because personally, I'm over in Eugene quite often and I noticed that these blue bicycles are scattered out all over the place. People seem to leave them laying along sidewalks and they're, and they're, uh, leaning against phone poles or in the shrubbery or whatnot. And so, uh, there may be some question about, I don't know how that's being administered, but, uh, that evidently is not something that Springfield is going to deal with in the immediate future. And the second item was in, on the area of boards and commissions. And since this is a work session, there was a number of different things that were considered, but since that time, they have, the council has taken a final vote on that. So I don't know if anybody has a report on what the final decisions were, but what was considered uh, under this agenda item was actually a little bit beyond the issue of boards and commissions because they were also discussing council policies as well. And, uh, one of the things that they were looking at, maybe clarifying a little bit is excused and unexcused absences, absences, where they wanted a little more clarity on what, which falls into which category. And the, another item that was being considered is that the council already has a winter break and a summer break. They were looking at the possibility of allowing a spring break, not necessarily something that would, would occur automatically, but something that could be considered if the, uh, volume of business permitted. And then as far as the boards and commissions part, uh, there was two things that I kept in mind is, number one is that anyone on a board or a commission who is completing their first term and are contemplating renewing for a second term, the council could potentially, not automatically, potentially waive the interview part of the process. So that would be, uh, of course they're, they're batching, or they're planning to, uh, batch all of these interviews into one time of the year, year, which is evidently going to be November. And so, uh, obviously, uh, the terms of the various board members are going to be extended to December ultimately, so that everybody's term ends at the same time. And the one other item that I, I noted was that in the process of, of filling these positions that occur at the end of each year, they want to try to ensure that the various positions are filled. So they want to have the authority to move people from one board or commission to another. And the example given was that if there's a, a board that has two openings and there's three applicants and then there's a board position, board with two openings and one applicant, they wanted to be able to move a person from the, uh, the board that has the excess person to move that person or a person to the other board that had the opening. So I don't know how that would work out because I can imagine that there may be some people that would be moved to a board that they weren't interested in. But again, this was a work session, so it was, uh, nothing finalized. So that in essence is my memory of that particular meeting.
Thanks, Tim. I'd say that was useful. Do we have any other reports of council meetings?
This is Curry. I attended yesterday's council meeting. I can report on. So the works, the work session was canceled. They had several public comments. Thirteen. Two of them were in relation to the process for filling the open city council position when they do the mayoral appointment. And then the rest were regarding the, the police department and concerns people have with that. The counselors now do a response time after the public comments. So they all gave a response to those public comments. Chief Lewis also responded about a particular incident that happened a little over, almost two weeks ago now. And then they, uh, then they mostly spent the time talking about that process for the city council position and what that will look like and what the timeline is and still trying to figure out when they'll actually do the mayoral appointment. And then how that trickles down to a city council position. So, um, the, in the end, it looks like the timeline that is that that city council position would ideally be filled by March. Those were the main things. Um, they also did talk a little bit about the new freeze, um, put in place by the governor and concerns that the chamber sent to them regarding clarity on why some of the, what data, some of the rules for closing restaurants and other businesses, um, were based on. And that was pretty much it.
Thank you, Curry. Any others?
I have been, uh, attended the city council on 10/26. Work session, first of all, spoke about, um, the Whitebird outreach to the unhoused. And it looked as if that was a really successful program, uh, including, uh, excellent rapport with clients that there, uh, appears that Whitebird is really trusted by the people that they serve. And, uh, they were able to, um, actually perform quite a few COVID tests on folks who, who desired to have it done and found absolutely no COVID among the population, which was great. Looking for probably for additional funding on that coming up. But it, it was not quite a substantial outreach, uh, by, by Whitebird to, uh, local, uh, Springfield unhoused material, including also distributing, uh, materials, um, food, sleeping bags, uh, things like, things of that nature. The second part of the work session was, uh, quite interesting. It was Jeff Pascal of Engineering and Sandy Nelson discussing extending infrastructure, particularly wastewater and stormwater lines to, um, areas that have not been developed sort of on the, uh, urban fringe, you'd say like in, uh, North Gateway, there was an area, South 28th, there was an area, Doris Ranch, East Springfield. Mentioning how, uh, in the past that, for instance, the Jasper trunk sewer was built, um, out Jasper Road and how, uh, two miles of sewer has resulted in, you know, all that housing growth out in that area. And then there's still room for more housing growth. So being that developers oftentimes don't have the money for something like, uh, you know, 10-inch sanitary sewer that's 14 feet deep. I mean, that's really expensive infrastructure that investment by the city of, um, some of the reserve funds in both the wastewater and stormwater could be done and that would spur development in those areas. Couple of questions about it was, you know, is there any way to tie that in to perhaps saying, you know, we're willing to build this if there's some commitment to affordable housing. So that was a pretty good idea, I thought. Steve Moe was also, uh, interested in whether there was a chance of using some of these funds to extend to unsuared areas of Glenwood. Now, these would be areas that already have existing houses on them, but currently work through, um, you know, drain fields instead of that. So that, I thought that was also a good idea. And there was a budget check-in that was done, uh, by our budget director. And it looks as if the reserves are going down fast for the city. So I think that this, it really came down to that the reserves are sort of okay by right now, by 2026, if there's not changes, that the reserves are probably going to be expanded. And, um, so the question is, you know, is there an ability still to get any cuts? Because Springfield already has gone, you know, significantly into the lean, uh, government position already. And, um, so if, if we want the same types of services, you know, we probably will probably be, uh, it will probably be necessary to increase revenues in some fashion. So there was that. And then the, uh, the work session broke up and there was a CEDA meeting, which is Springfield Economic Development Agency. And the discussion was what to do with the Springfield Buick, property that is next to the, it's just west of the post office right in downtown. And, uh, there was a gentleman there who is intending on trying to build large, uh, I believe it was a seven-story, $21 million apartment complex there. And they've been convert the old Springfield Buick into like some kind of restaurant brew pub or something like that. Unfortunately, doesn't have a lot of money. So it's a question of, you know, is, uh, CEDA, Springfield Economic Development Association, are they interested in assisting the gentleman to develop that property? And that was pretty much that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any other reports? Thanks, Mike. Are there any other reports? Hearing none. Do we have business from members? Hearing none. Do we have business from the public works?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about your upcoming meeting in December. So as Monica shared, she will be bringing to you an amendment to the community and our public engagement plan for the Wetland and Riparian Inventory Project. We had thought we would bring the code update citizen engagement plan, but that we're going to wait on that amendment because the rules for the middle housing have not yet been finalized. So we need some more time to figure out how we're going to respond to those. So we will have the, just the engagement plan for the inventory. But one of my questions is whether you want to try to have Sophie McGinnly come back for her item next time in December. We could have, since she wasn't able to join us tonight, we could have that item moved to that time if you want to hear that. And then my second question or confirmation is, it sounds like we should be adding these council reports to the agendas for the CCI because we're not having that many planning commission meetings as regular meetings. And so to get these reports, we should probably add that to the agenda as well. So just checking on the agenda for next meeting.
Thanks, Sandy. As far as Sophie giving a report to us, I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm open to that. Others? Sounds good.
Yeah, that's fine with me as long as it'll fit in with the, in the schedule. I think that's perfect.
Okay. I'll check with her and make sure that she can be available. And if that fits in the schedule, we'll go ahead and do that. And also, if there is a video, I will make sure that you know whether to watch it ahead of time or not. So that you can, I'm a little bit more clear on that. And I realized that for the, we did not list the videos on the AISs for the Monica's item or tonight. And so that is something we can make sure we do in the future. If there is going to be a video, we make sure it's listed on the AIS and that way, if people are just looking at that, it's clear that's part of the pocket. So with that, I don't have anything to add unless there's any other, there's quite a lot of stuff here. If anybody else wants to speak in, speak up, now would be your chance.
Sandy, there was one other item we talked about for public record or just the record when we move into a public hearing setting, adding to the agenda or making sure that commissioners acknowledge or share whether or not they had viewed the public comments on the webpage. So moving to that eventually, wanted to capture that point. And that was it.
I'm not hearing any other staff chime in, so I think we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I thank you.
Thanks. And especially thanks to Tim Vose. Really enjoyed working with you.
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Happy holiday, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.